Are we on? Everybody, have everybody's attention please. Grab a seat if there's one available. I would like to welcome Remco Brahm here to lead us in our invocation. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Remco Brahm up for, to lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Our God in heaven, we thank you for this new year, 2018, and a new opportunity to serve you by serving the people of this city. We ask for your grace and favor to rest upon the mayor and the city council, especially our two new council members as they begin their service. Grant them your wisdom, grant them integrity, grant them insight as they decide upon and handle the affairs of this city. We ask for your grace and favor to rest on our city staff as well as our police and fire departments as they serve our people in everyday life. And we ask for your grace and favor to rest upon our city this year as well. Grant prosperity to our businesses, grant a commitment to and a desire for lifelong learning to our schools. Grant peace and harmony to our homes and our neighborhoods, and grant safety to our streets. All of these things we ask in your name, the name above all names. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone and to our regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, January 8th, 2018, to order. And I want to welcome our two new council members here, Peyton and Laura, and everybody else that's here. So we appreciate you being here. And Suti, I believe the first thing we have to do is administer an oath so that we are legal, and we'll try to move forward. I think there's a football game tonight or something, somebody said. Thank you all.
Yeah, I'm trying to like hide.
I, Peyton Jameson, do solemnly swear in the firm.
I, Peyton Jameson, do solemnly swear in the firm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of council member of this city.
Of council member of this city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
That I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the constitution.
As well as the constitution.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
I, Laura Bentley, do solemnly swear in the firm.
I, Laura Bentley, do solemnly swear in the firm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of council member of this city.
Of council member of this city.
And that I will faithfully support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
As well as the constitution.
As well as the constitution.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Congratulations.
Thank you all, and welcome to our two new council members. Suti, if you'll please call roll and make general announcements, I'll give you a second here. Actually, I need to move up to next agenda item, election of the mayor pro tem.
Next item is election of the mayor pro tem.
I'd like to, at this point, we need to elect a new mayor pro tem. So I'd like to open up the nominations for the position of mayor pro tem, and then look for a second. Councilmember Bentley. Have to practice that. Never said councilmember Bentley before.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to name councilmember Joe Longoria, who is not present here today, from District 3, Post 1, to serve as mayor pro tem for the 2000, year of 2018.
A second now.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, councilmember Bentley, a second from councilmember Coontz, for nomination of councilmember Longoria for mayor pro tem. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous, Suti. So Suti, if you'd please call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll be happy to call roll for the January 8th, 2018, regular meeting. I'd like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide a public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
For the record, councilmember Longoria is not present. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I appreciate everybody being here tonight, and also the Milton Steelers here. We're excited to have you guys here. We'll try to move through our business. We've got a lot of boards and committee members that we're going to appoint. Just clarification too, councilmember Longoria is not here, and we will swear him in at our next meeting, so.
And that would be on January 17th.
Okay. Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 18001.
Yeah, I'd like to move the Milton Steelers proclamation to, right after the approval of the agenda, as well as the boards and committees of councils, okay with that? So.
I'll make a motion to change the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for the agenda as read with the changes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Suti, if you'll please call the next item.
Our next item is a proclamation in recognition of the Milton Steelers, and this is being presented by councilmember Matt Coontz.
All right. It's my honor and privilege to give this proclamation tonight on behalf of the Milton Steelers. Now way back in 2011, one of my opening statements I made when I was running for council was, "When a Milton youth football team beats up on a Roswell youth football team, it's a good day in Milton." And at that time, we had no football fields, and the only football programs were the high school feeder teams and the Alfreda Youth Football Association, both of which were good programs in and of themselves. But I believed it was important for us as a city and as a community to establish our brand, and where we competed around the city, just let Milton be known. So we laid the framework, we built football fields at Bell Memorial Park, and watched to see what would happen next. And around that time, now prior to this, Tim and Natalie Nestor had been doing flag football, but around that time, they came to us with the idea of running their own tackle youth football program. They were small, maybe about 20 kids. I went to watch them practice at Milton High School, and having over 20 years' experience with football myself, I wanted to see how and if they would grow. Yeah, Tim and his coaches taught the right fundamentals and technique the right way, but there was more. What I saw were kids who were enthusiastic about learning. I saw young men fall down and teammates pick them back up. I saw coaches who enjoyed the game just as much as the kids did, and who were not out there for themselves but for the very spirit of teamwork. I saw the kids compete both with toughness and compassion, and they knew that by challenging each other, they would make each other better, and then only the team would benefit. The council unanimously approves the Milton Steelers program to be our football provider, and it was a tough first season. The kids learned some hard lessons, recognizing that they had to earn their stripes and get knocked around a little bit before they had a chance to compete. But they never gave up. The kids worked, practiced, believed, competed, lost, and lost some more. But then it clicked. Tim and Natalie Lester's belief in clear eyes, full heart, can't lose began to shine. Our Parks and Rec program came together. Van Cottis, a friend of mine and a member of the Parks and Rec Committee, worked tirelessly on a new contract. Now, he recently passed away a few weeks ago. But before he died, he told me that the new Milton Steelers contract was one of the proudest things he had done outside of his family. And that is because it allowed free tackle football in Milton. Now that's unheard of, but we did it first here in Milton. The contract did not reduce any of the numbers of the other programs from what we've heard, but it actually added an additional, I think, 75 players to the Milton Steelers program. Now, these are Milton kids who are learning the valuable lessons of life through sports that before, they never would have had that opportunity. Now, at the beginning of the season, it was my honor to do the first official coin toss for the Milton Steelers football game at Bell Memorial Park, and I knew then that things were going to be special, and they were. We are here tonight because the Milton Steelers program has won all kinds of honors, which I'll read in this proclamation. But not only that, they came one game away from representing our great city in Canton, Ohio, for the championship. Now unfortunately, they lost before they got there. And that can always be a hard lesson for everybody, but the parents and the players and the coaches, regardless of the outcome, had a season to remember and one which made us all proud. And no matter what happens, when you players back there are 40 years old, you can all meet up and say, "Remember that game? We got robbed." And then you'll allow, because you remember, win or lose, you did it together, right? Now tonight, we have a college football national championship with two excellent teams. And I know we're all rooting for the Georgia Bulldogs except for Bert. But both those teams, so maybe you're Auburn guy too, right? There you go. But both those teams began their seasons by executing the very principles that the young Milton Steelers did here today. And all of these players, if they remember the principles that they learned this season, will grow to become outstanding young men, not only in their families, but also their businesses and their communities, and maybe, maybe on some future football fields in the NFL. So again, it's my honor to read this proclamation, as I have all the confidence in the world that next year, that championship belongs to Milton. So go Steelers. So, this proclamation. Whereas the Milton Steelers formed as an organization in 2011 and became an official program partner to the city of Milton in 2012, and whereas the Milton Steelers pioneered the usage of the guardian cap, an extra layer of protection that reduces the impact of a collision by 30%. And whereas the Milton Steelers don't put a player's name on the back of the jersey, instead, each player has a character word which they must learn, live, and teach to the other players. And whereas the Milton Steelers teach a motto of clear eyes, full hearts, can't lose. And whereas the Milton Steelers program was named the GRPA Volunteer of the Year in both the District 7 level and the State of Georgia level, and whereas the Milton Steelers 12-and-under tackle team captured the 2017 Youth Football Alliance State of Georgia Championship, and whereas these young men are champions, not only on the field, but also in the classroom, in the community, and in life. We are proud of the Milton Steelers and their 12-and-under state champion team and their contributions to our community. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton, hereby dictate and proclaim Monday, January 8th, as Milton Steelers Championship Appreciation Day in the city of Milton, Georgia, given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this 8th day of January, 2018. So if the players would come down here, we have proclamations to give you and photographs to take, and the coaches as well, pairs, everybody, come on back. and photographs to take, and the coaches as well, parents, everybody, come on back. Come here, guys. Can you hand these out? Coaching them, players, okay? Once you're coached, you're always a coach, and never loses.
Let's see how the picture.
I've had it a whole while.
You guys come back this way.
Back of the shirts.
And everybody can take pictures as soon as I'm done. You're more than welcome. Council, take about a half step this way for me. Okay. All right, guys, we're all looking here. If you're on the front row and you have your proclamation, I want you to look at it, make sure your seal is on the bottom. Your seal on the bottom? Okay, I want your two hands holding it like this, and hold it down past right here. Like, right at your hip, right at your waist, right there. Perfect. Young man on the end, take just a half step back from me. Perfect. We're all looking right here. Thanks for your patience. Okay, going here. Going, one, two, three. I'm going to do again, hold on just a minute. Stand, stand, one more. One, two, three, smile. One again, one, two, three. Excellent. Okay, parents, if y'all want to take a quick picture, you certainly can. Everybody stay in place while parents, anybody want to get up here? You can, but please be careful. Can you get up here? Everybody good? Yes. Awesome, and I will send a high-res photo as well. Perfect.
See y'all. Absolutely, yep. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations to not only the players, but coaches and the parents. How do you guys? Got a first spill here. Sudi, if you would please call the next item on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda was moved from new business. This is consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals by appointing a board member at large and for District 1, Post 1, District 2, Post 1, District 3, Post 1, and District 1, Post 2. This is agenda item number 18012. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Since councilmember Longoria is not here, I'll nominate his reappointments also. So I would like to reappoint Ken Sisson for a Board of Zoning Appeals as my appointee. Any questions from council on that? Now I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ken Sisson to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Hewitt, a second from councilmember Koots. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. So, next, councilmember Jameson, do you have your appointee?
Um, yes, I'd like to appoint Rich Johnson to the City of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals. He's lived in Milton since 2013. Lives in Crab Apple with his wife, Ally, and two children, Tripp and Blakely. He's previously been a member of the Designer V Board and is currently a board member for the Crab Apple Community Association.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Rich Johnson to the Board of Zoning Appeals for Peyton Jameson's district.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from councilmember Koots, a second from councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, let's see, we'll move to councilmember Bentley. If you would like to make your nomination for Board of Zoning Appeals.
Todd Churnick is a native Miltonian. He is married with teenage twins. He holds a bachelor of business degree from Ohio University and MBA from Campbell University. Todd served on the first inaugural comprehensive land use plan and recently on the update. Todd has a dedicated record of service to the Milton citizens, as well as council, through his membership and leadership on the BZA. When speaking with Todd about this important position in our community, he stated that being a part of an efficient city government that works to serve the interest of our residents is what motivates him to continue to serve. And for this reason, I am very pleased to appoint Todd Churnick.
Do I have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to approve Todd Churnick to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Jameson, a second from councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, so we will move. On behalf of councilmember Longoria, I'd like to nominate a reappointment of Kim Keller to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Kim Keller to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Bentley, a second from councilmember Koots. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that passes unanimous. So councilmember Hewitt, if you would like to make your nomination for Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'd like to nominate the reappointment of Hodge Patel to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Hodge currently lives in Waterside, where he's the president of the Homeowners Association, and has been very involved in many of the planning processes in the city. He's an asset manager for the real estate firm Carter and Associates. And his wife, Mayuri, and his 13-year-old son, Devon, live with him, obviously. And he attends Northwestern Middle School.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Hodge Patel to the Board of Zoning Appeals, District 1, Post 2.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Koots with a second from councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. And if those members that were just reappointed would step forward, we can swear, I can swear them in. And afterwards, if the council will join for a photo op. I'll tell everybody in the audience a trick. If you read the statement that you want your members to do, and then you look them in the eye, just a moment. So if you guys would all raise your right hand and repeat after me, "I do solemnly swear and affirm" "that I will faithfully perform the duties of" "the Board of Zoning Appeals member" "of the city" "and that I will support and defend the charter thereof" "as well as the Constitution" "and laws of the state of Georgia" "and of the United States of America." Thank you very much. Guys, want to come down and get a picture with the board?
Sorry. Carter. So, mayor, if you will, if you'll go in the center. To do is I'd like for your appointee to be angled off you. So is everyone near their appointee or their councilmember appointed? Okay, perfect. I will get you to scoot this way. Yes, same thing, Ken, if you'll scoot in between the two, right there. Yes. Who, what, Joe Longoria, councilman Longoria. Your Joe's on the end, I want to make sure we got everybody. Okay. Perfect. Everybody take a half a step this way for me? Everybody. Everybody, okay, now we're over here. We're going, one, two, three. One more, we're going, one, two, three, smile. Eyes are open, we're great, thank you.
Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Cultural Arts Committee for District 1, Post 1. Agenda item number 18013, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. And I'll open up, councilmember Jameson, if you'd like to introduce your appointee.
Um, yes, I'd like to appoint Kevin Swan. Kevin and his family have lived in Milton since 2014. His wife actually owns a business in Crab Apple and has been owner there since its inception. Kevin works for Scarchy Wear and has two children, Gavin and Luna, and he's very active in the community.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kevin Swan to the Milton Cultural Arts Committee.
Second.
I have a second. Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Bentley with a second from councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous, Sudi. So we'll... I believe that's... Yep. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I do solemnly swear and affirm"
"I do solemnly swear and affirm"
"that I will faithfully perform the duties of"
"that I will faithfully perform the duties of"
"the Milton Cultural Arts Committee"
"the Milton Cultural Arts Committee"
"of the city"
"of the city"
"and that I will support and defend the charter thereof"
"and I will support and defend the charter thereof"
"as well as the Constitution"
"as well as the Constitution"
"and the laws of the state of Georgia"
"and the laws of the state of Georgia"
"and of the United States"
"and of the United States.
And if everybody take a full step to the line, well. Okay, perfect. Please don't touch one another. One, two, three, smile. Just do one more. One, two, three, smile. Excellent. All right, thank you.
And just for those in the audience, we appreciate your patience. This is, you know, our first meeting, and we've got to reappoint everybody, so just appreciate your patience tonight. Hey, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Design Review Board by appointing a board member for District 1, Post 1, District 2, Post 1, District 3, Post 1, and District 1, Post 2. Agenda item number 18014, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, councilmember Jameson, if you'd like to state your nomination for DRB.
Um, yes, I'd like to reappoint Marty Littleton. He's been the chair for the last few years and been very active in the community.
I'll make a motion to appoint Marty Littleton to District 1, Post 1, to the Design Review Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, councilmember Koots, with a second from councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That passes unanimous. So do we have any more on the... Yep. All right, now we'll move to councilmember Bentley.
Beniquis Palmer is married with a preschooler. She holds a Master of Science in Construction and a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. She is currently employed by Choate Construction as a senior pre-construction manager. Benny is a talented and accomplished construction management professional with an extensive background in project management and civil engineering. When I met Benny and we talked about this position, she was very aware of the duties and expertise required because she enjoys watching the videos livestream from home. And she's very up to speed with what the DRB does. So for that reason, I'm very proud to nominate Benny, Beniquis Palmer, to the DRB.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make... You go for it, Bert.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Beniquis Palmer to the Design Review Board for District 2, Post 1, second.
Okay, got a motion from councilmember Hewitt, a second from councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That passes unanimous. So, next, on behalf of councilmember Longoria, I'd like to nominate Laura Weisong for reappointment to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. So I'll open up, do I have a motion?
DRB.
DRB, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion, mayor, to appoint Laura Weisong to District 3, Post 1, on the Design Review Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Koots and a second from councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. Councilmember Hewitt, we'll move on.
I'd like to appoint Reed Casey to the Design Review Board. Reed and his wife Tara live off Bethany Road with their three small children. Reed owns his own real estate business and has been active in the Crab Apple Community Association.
Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Reed Casey as a Designer Review Board for Bert's district.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Jameson with a second from councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimous. Okay, if those members of the Designer Review Board that are here, if they would step forward, we will swear you in. Guys, we'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I do solemnly swear and affirm"
"I do solemnly swear and affirm"
"that I will faithfully perform the duties of"
"that I will faithfully perform the duties of"
"the Design Review Board member"
"the Design Review Board member"
"of the city"
"of the city"
"and that I will support and defend the charter thereof"
"and that I will support and defend the charter thereof"
"as well as the Constitution"
"as well as the Constitution"
"and the laws of the state of Georgia"
"and the laws of the state of Georgia"
"and of the United States of America"
"and of the United States of America.
Oh, um, people liking New York appointee, yes. In this case, we're taking a half step this way. Keeping our toes, I like it. And this hand, just tighten up just a little bit. Perfect, okay. Take a half step over, just a little bit more. Okay, perfect. And one, two, three. Let's do again. One, looking here, two, three. Hold that place. Excellent, thank you.
All right, Sudi, if you would please call the next item.
Our next item is consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Equestrian Committee by appointing a board member at large and for District One, Post One, District Two, Post One, and District Three, Post One. Agenda item number eighteen zero one five, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. I will, uh, would like to reappoint Julie Shannon to the Equestrian Committee as my appointee. Do I have a motion to reappoint Julie Shannon?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint, uh, Julie Shannon to the Milton Equestrian Committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous, Sudi. Councilmember Jameson, I'll...
All right. Um, I'd like to reappoint Carol Cookerly to the Equestrian Committee. She's lived in Milton for over twenty years. Uh, she owns Cookerly Public Relations Headquarter in Atlanta. She's married to Robert Beal and has two grown stepchildren, and she's been active in the community since its inception.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Carol Cookerly to the Equestrian Committee for District One, Post One.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. Okay, I'll move on to our Councilmember Bentley.
I'd like to appoint Elizabeth, Elizabeth Dravet. Her husband and three children moved from the Northeast to Milton in 2012. She was attracted to Milton for its equestrian sense of community and commitment to maintain its rural heritage. Her family owns a horse farm where she enjoys dressage, trail riding, and teaching her kids how to ride and take care of their horses. Elizabeth holds a doctorate of pharmacy and is a licensed and practicing pharmacist. I served with Liz on the MECC for the past year. She is a devoted member, serving as the secretary, and brings a variety of knowledge and experience to the board. She is a passionate, uh, she is passionate about preserving Milton's equestrian heritage, and I'm very pleased to appoint Liz to the Milton Equestrian Committee.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Liz Dravet to District Two, Post One, in the Milton Equestrian Committee.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Coontz, second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Now, if I can move on to... Yep, and that's, uh, Councilmember Bentley.
Tony Rich is, uh, married with two teenage children in 2016. He purchased a twenty-five acre horse farm in Milton where they are currently in the process of, uh, developing a new equestrian business and building a home. Tony is a graduate of Clemson University with a Bachelor of Science in Finance and Rollins College with MBA. Tony has twenty-five years' experience working with, uh, privately held businesses and not-for-profit. He currently volunteers his time, uh, for numerous boards such as the Special Olympics of Georgia, Young Life, and Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. I am introducing Tony for, as Joe Longoria's appointment to the Milton Equestrian Committee.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to appoint Tony Rich to the Milton Equestrian Committee for District Three, Post One.
Okay.
Second.
Now, I have a motion from Councilmember Morick, second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous, Sudi. And, um, with that, if these members that are here step forward and we will swear them in. You guys will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
The Milton Equestrian Committee.
The Milton Equestrian Committee.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
All right, thank you.
All shift this way. Two steps for me. This way, two. Little bit more. Perfect. Tighten up for me just a little bit. One, two, looking here, three. Okay, one more, hold on. And one, two, three, smile. Yep, open eyes, thank you.
Hey, Sudi, if you'd please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board by appointing a board member at large and for District One, Post One, District Two, Post One, and District Three, Post One. Agenda item number eighteen zero one six, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
To, uh, reappoint Dave Shannon as my appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to... Like to make a motion to, uh, appoint Dave Shannon to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous, Sudi. So, Councilmember Jameson?
Um, yes, I'd like to appoint Todd Towns. Um, he's an owner and co-founder of Fusion Atlanta, an elite sports performance center in Buckhead. Um, he's also a consultant for Nike and owns Source Fitness Management. He played competitive sports at the collegiate level, earning an undergraduate and graduate degree at the University of Mississippi. He's a longtime resident of Milton with his wife Krista and sons Parker and Price.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve Todd Towns for District One, Post One, in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Coontz, second from, uh, Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. Councilmember Bentley, we'll move on to you.
Jason Albarisi is married and has two children, active in youth lacrosse, football, soccer, and basketball. He went to the University of Albany in New York where he played college lacrosse, and he's currently employed as a Regional Vice President for Purchasing Power. Jason has coached and volunteered in many leagues. When speaking with Jason about this position, I was impressed with his depth of understanding of Milton's recreational offerings and his practical suggestions to increase access to sports in our community. I'm proud to appoint Jason Albarisi to the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Jason Albarisi to the Parks and Recreation Board for District Two, Post One.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember, um, Hewitt with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. On behalf of Councilmember Joe Longoria, I'd like to nominate Scott Stahowski, uh, for a reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Board. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Scott Stahowski to the Parks Recreation Advisory Board, District Three, Post One.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Morick, second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous. So, if Dave, Todd, Jason, and Scott could step forward, we'll swear them in. You guys would raise your right hand and repeat after me. All right, if you, uh, if you repeat after me, I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Member.
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, Sudi, if you'd please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the City of Milton Planning Commission by appointing a board member at large and for District One, Post One, District Two, Post One, and District Three, Post One.
Okay. Um, I'll be nominating Paul Moore for reappointment to the Planning Commission. I think, uh, Paul has served for me as my appointee since day one of the city, so, we've gone, what, eleven years, so... I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Paul Moore to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from, uh, Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Councilmember Jameson?
Um, yes, I'd like to appoint Heather Sparks. Uh, Heather has lived in the City of Milton since 2015. She lives in Waterside Subdivision with her husband David and son Nicholas. Heather is a senior planner for Lozen Associates and has more than fifteen years of city planning experience. She's a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners and serves on the board of the Crab Apple Community Association.
Okay. Do I have a motion for...
I'll make a motion to appoint Heather Sparks to the Planning Commission for District One, Post One.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Coontz with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. All right, we'll, uh, move on to, um, Councilmember Bentley.
I'd like to appoint Ron Gilbert. He's recent, a recent, uh, retiree from financial services. Um, he has returned back to Milton after being away for seventeen years. He is married with two adult children and graduated from the American University with a degree in economics. He holds an MBA from the Wharton School of the University of Pennsylvania. The bulk of his career was spent with the General Electric Company. Ron is passionate about Milton's rural character. I was especially impressed with Ron's eagerness to work with city staff and citizens to protect Milton's exceptional quality of life. It is my pleasure to appoint Ron Gilbert.
Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint Ron?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ron Gilbert to the Planning Commission for District Two, Post One.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Morick, a second from Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So, uh... If those that are here, uh, for Planning Commission will step forward, we'll swear you in. You guys probably already know this, though. If you would, uh, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
The Planning Commission Member.
The Planning Commission Member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
I'll take two steps this way. Okay, a half a step, that's right, perfect. Okay, let's tighten up just a little bit, there we go, perfect. Right here, one, two, three. One, yeah. Yeah, one, two, three, smile.
Would, would say this, um... We have a cake and some drinks out, uh, back there, but, uh, it looks like most of the members have, have gone, so, it's up to, uh... I'll let the audience decide. Do they want to stop and have a little break and a party, or do they want to continue the meeting, so...
So I get up there, I've been, I was up there in
I used to be the chief police there for many years.
Just getting to know each other.
Right, we don't know each other. Yes.
I also went to school there.
Okay, Roberts, Jeff Roberts?
Yep. I trained him when he came on the job. He remains a close friend of mine.
So he played football for the
Oh, did he really?
Yeah, for the Irons.
Jeff, Jeff is a very, very good friend of mine. My Christine is also a good friend of mine.
Okay, yes, and the whole family.
That's pretty funny.
Yeah.
That is pretty funny. I couldn't believe when I heard you were at U Albany.
Yeah.
Well, well, I love
Where are you from in New York?
Well, I grew up along in another pocket, going to U Albany, but I've been up at Albany since nineteen eighty-eight, right up until I came here in twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
What do you do?
I work for Vincent's Company.
He's still going up there?
Yeah, we have the union there.
How's that do for you, Dave?
We have a saying here where they say, we have to call coverage about it, we send it to the board.
Yeah.
Because somebody said that that's the way it was called in the green, because it's a
North of Westchester, it's civilized, you know?
Well, I mean, there's a last
I have something else to say. I think it's chess.
Pleasure to meet you.
Yes, we appreciate it.
I gotta talk to you. Who wants to miss? Can we reschedule and take a look?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to
What do you think?
Right, right. You're right. You're on the phone. Yeah. You know, I used to You didn't know that? Where she was at City of Roswell. That was in line, yes. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry why you look so Yeah. But our Last song you were Takes you Yeah, it's not a hard To deal with Nice. I'm sorry, you know. 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 I'm sorry, you know.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's passage unanimous, Sooty. Um, let's see, we will move on to first presentation.
First item is consideration of RZ seventeen zero nine text amendment to Article nine, Grab Apple Form Based Code four point nine as it relates to parking. Agenda item number eighteen zero zero eight. Next is consideration of RZ seventeen dash ten text amendment to Article twenty Deerfield Form Based Code four point nine as it relates to parking. Agenda item number eighteen zero zero nine. Next, consideration of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget to address the recognition of property tax revenues and for other purposes. Agenda item number eighteen zero one zero. Our final first presentation item this evening is consideration of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget to address the recognition of property tax revenues. Agenda item number eighteen zero one one.
May I make a motion to approve the first presentation items as read?
Second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Coontz, second by Councilmember Morik. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items on a public hearing. So we'll move on to our zoning agenda. Sooty, if you'll please read the zoning rules and sound the zoning item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for the meeting. Those speaking in support of the zoning will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present. Those speaking in opposition will also have a total of ten minutes to present. Our zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ seventeen eleven text amendment to Article twenty Deerfield Form Based Code Table ten, specific function and use regarding the T six transect zone. Agenda item number seventeen three two three. First presentation was heard at the city council meeting on December fourth, two thousand seventeen. This item was deferred to the city council meeting on December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Respectfully, I do have one public comment card in opposition. Do we want to hear that first?
Um, yeah, I would, it's okay with the council. I'd like to hear the public comment first. It's fine.
And that comment comes from Joshua Scoggins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Joshua Scoggins with the law firm of Miles, Hansford, and Talent in Coming, Georgia. I represent Crescent Resources Incorporated, which owns two parcels in the T six transect area. One is the twenty-one acre tract on Deerfield Parkway. One is a thirty-four acre tract that splits Alpharetta and Milton along Morris Road. Um, I did notice that attached to your, to your agenda was a recommendation from a work session to change from prohibited to requiring a use permit apartments in that T six transect area. I have actually just one housekeeping recommendation that I think will actually help you retain more control over residential uses going forward. Rather than prohibit all of the residential uses besides apartments, if you require, change that use in your ordinance to require a use permit, I think you would actually be in the same position legally because use permits have the same legal standard as a rezoning, but it would severely limit the ability for somebody to throw out your whole form-based code on a zoning challenge. The, my point with that is, is if somebody wanted to do, say duplexes or quads on a piece of property, before they could sue you to challenge your ordinance, they would have to come before you and ask you to change it, meaning they would have to file a rezoning application that would essentially take that property out of the Deerfield Form-Based Code. I'm not saying you would approve it, but that's what they'd have to ask for. If they were to challenge that decision not to approve it, and they were successful, I think that the order from the court would basically be something to the effect that your form-based code does not apply to this property. By making them a, require a use permit, you still have the discretion to approve or deny it, just like you would a zoning. But if they challenged it, the only challenge would be to the use, not to all of the other aesthetic and architectural requirements in the form-based code. So my point in saying that is, I think that by making them require a use permit, you would be in a better position going forward than you would be just to prohibit them outright. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
That's all, sir.
Then I'll, I'll close the public hearing part, but go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As we discussed at the council work session on December the eleventh, I did relay to you the fact that the city has a limited amount of land that's available for commercial and office uses located within the Deerfield Form-Based Code, specifically in the T six transect zone. This zone has received a significant amount of interest from residential developers, and we feel that this is our highest density zone within Deerfield and that, and really you can, you're allowed to height up to sixteen stories, which gives you a sense of the allowed density there. And so, we had originally proposed that all residential uses in the T six zone be prohibited because we, we felt that commercial and office was a, a much better use for this high-density zone. However, we have since modified that request in that we would like to include apartments because as we look at high-density mixed-use developments in the area, many of them do include apartments. Now, by virtue of the fact that apartments are only allowed by a use permit, you would get a chance to review the, any proposed development on a case-by-case basis. But we felt from an economic development perspective that leaving in the ability for apartments, but also requiring it to be a use permit as it is now, would be a, a good means of moving forward. In fairness, I will say that we originally discussed this with the planning commission without that modification of allowing the apartments, and all members of the planning commission supported the proposal without any residential. Subsequent to our work session, I did have an opportunity to bring this issue back to the planning commission and did relay to them the idea of including the apartments within that, and they unanimously felt that they wanted to deny that recommendation. So I bring that forward to you so that you are aware of it. From an economic development planning perspective, however, and the fact that a use permit is required, we felt there, there is sufficient opportunity for review, but allows from an economic development perspective, the opportunity for someone, should they want to include that type of use in a high-dense development, to at least have the opportunity to bring it forward, so.
Okay, I'll open up on the questions for Kathy.
I have a question. Is there, is there a, if it was a use permit for the apartments, is there any stipulation that the base floor, because we talked about this last time, the base floor would still be commercial, or no?
Yes, yes. The, the, the base floor has to be a non-resi, thank you for bringing that up, the base floor has to be a non-residential use, or fifty percent has to be non-residential, i.e. for commercial or office.
So that's regardless, so no matter what happens from a use permit, they can't get rid of that base floor and make it residential?
That's requirement, yes, and then it would still have to come in with a use permit, but those requirements are inherent in that use permit.
Right.
Okay, anybody else?
Um, Kathy, was there any discussion on prohibiting apartments but allowing a use permit for town, for townhomes? Um, if someone wanted to do a mixed-use development with townhomes and not apartments?
Uh, no, there was not. Based on the amount of density that's allowed in the T six, we felt that townhomes would be not as a dense use, whereas with apartments, you could, you could go into a high-rise, literally, and so therefore the density would be reflective of that T six use.
So, T, sorry, T six can go up sixteen stories? And fifty percent of that can be apartments?
If there were, if there, if apartments were part of that mix, only fifty percent could be apartments. The rest would have to be non-apartment uses, such as business, I mean, commercial or office, retail, whatever.
And we have other T, T two through T five, those are for residential?
Oh, residential are allowed in those.
And the T six was specifically identified in the comp plan as where we are going to have professional and commercial, you know, reserve that for it, is, is what I found in the comp plan.
Yeah, it's a high-intensity development, is, is what we're looking. So what type of uses would reflect a high-intensity development? And, and those are clearly commercial and office, but we think that apartments could be part of that use. But again, you would be protected by virtue of the fact that it would have to come through a use permit.
And a question, you know, we don't have, there's not very much T six in, you know, in the city, but-
That's correct.
Approximately, off the top of your head, do you know about how much, many properties are T six, or areas?
Oh, no, not off the top of my head. I, I can tell you that it's, um, it's located along Deerfield Parkway, Reb Road, Webb Road, and Morris Road adjacent to four hundred. So it's sort of in our areas where there's, um, um, you know, um, high density in terms of traffic access.
Anybody else?
Um, Kathy, how many apartments could you fit on that piece of property if you just ballpark it for me? How many, would, tell me, did they come in for the first, the first time?
Oh, I wish Robin were here. Um, do you remember, yeah, um, I want to say it was something like two hundred and fifty, or something along those lines, but they were all apartments. They, they were, there, there was no other use site, and that was a variance request that came in with as part of that use permit.
Okay.
Matt?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment on the history on this, and this was a long time ago, um, when Crescent came in, and the, um, the original zoning they had was for all residential.
Right.
At the time, we were looking at it, we had actually just done some kind of a citizen engagement deal where it was zoned entirely commercial. However, there are some interesting developments that come up that have some potential mixed use that, that really is attractive to a lot of areas, and, and some economic areas are looking at that. And so the form-based code was good because it has flexibility of economics. So we have commercial and residential, depending on what the market bears, and so that could actually change back and forth. It's not always going to be just one thing or the other, you know, it can come and go depending on, you know, what a use is. An apartment could eventually be renovated to an office and vice versa, down to fifty percent, though, so. So on that, there's a flexibility that I appreciate because it allows for, you know, if it's going to be developed, the form is going to look a certain way, but the use can change based on the rules and parameters that we put into play. If that's the case, and we can maintain that, I think I'd be okay with the use permit at fifty percent on that, just because that's what the form-based code is designed. I would prefer it be entirely all commercial, and it could if the market bears that, but I want to make sure that we have some flexibility so that we don't have empty office spaces either, if the market ever goes that route. So, um, so I like the flexibility on that, and I know you've worked a lo, a long time on this, so I just want to appreciate the hard work and just make those comments.
Okay, Laura?
Um, and, and commercial revenue is, future commercial revenue, that's what the T six zone has been set aside for, correct?
Yes, certainly, yes. We would, um, uh, look to grow that area in terms of high-intensity commercial office-type development, with, again, the ability to, to insert some residences on a case-by-case basis.
And just to make sure I understand this, so this went to the planning commission and did not have apartments-
Correct.
-when they first voted to approve it six to nothing?
Correct.
And then you just did an informal on-
I had an opportunity, subsequent to the, um, council work session on the eleventh, the, the planning commission met on December thirteenth, and so I did bring back to them the fact that, of what had transpired, and my recommendation to the, to the, to the council at that time. And because I hadn't brought it up previously, I asked them, you know, what their thoughts were, and at that time, they unanimously voted against that recommendation.
And just one more question, and was this a regular text amendment that traveled through the CZIM process, or how, was this, is this different?
Yes.
Why did this, why did it change after it reached the planning commission?
Be, well, we, we're, we always can, can look along the way as, it was a work session, and so we felt that it was something that we wanted to bring forward. We always try to perfect things as it moves through the process, and so we thought that this was certainly relevant and, um, an important addition, so we brought it through in the work session, which is, you know, um-
If I could add to that, some of the current demand that we're seeing out there is of that mixed use. The residential component that you're seeing built in some of the, the areas surrounding Milton seems to be the demand. People want to live, work, and play in the, in the same general area, and we're seeing the demand go in that direction. That was part of what drove our decision to include some residential component to, uh, to the T six. You are correct in stating that we're looking to maximize our commercial revenues. We have a limited T six area. In fact, part of our strategic plan is to maximize our, our commercial areas, but it appears the current development patterns and demands are dictating that there's some mixed component to that, which includes residential.
Thank you.
And I just, you know, a couple of things, and I want to also, just to clarify too, with, with our city manager, you know, when we talk about maximizing our commercial areas, it's not necessarily for development sake or, or tax basis. It's, it's, um, our, you know, we have a limited area of commercial, a small amount of commercial areas, but it's, it's more for resources for our, our citizens. It's, uh, you know, sometimes people talk about traffic and all, but if you've got, if you can drive to your local restaurant, or your store, or your businesses, or your office closer, that helps too, so it's more lifestyle. So it's certainly not, we're not trying to put in more commercial and spread and, and, you know, the rest of Milton, but these are just small areas that, you know, looking for lifestyle for, for choices for our citizens here, so, um, it's not necessarily about a, a revenue or, or thing like that, so. Um, and a question too, can, uh, um, you know, the public comment that we got tonight, can you address that as it pertains to what the use permit on, I believe it was duplexes and things, or, you know, could you address that if you-
Right, so, so the way-
How does that affect what?
Well, the way this reads now, obviously, is you're taking, if you look in your agenda packet and look at the actual charts, you'll see that there are a bunch of ours there, which was allowed by right, that are being stricken. So obviously, that means not only, um, could you not do it by way of a use permit, that means that it's not an available use at all, whether the council may want it to be a use or not. So I, I understood what the speaker was saying. The speaker was basically saying, why bind your hands that way? Give yourself some more flexibility. There may be a product that you may enjoy or want in that area that you will therefore be precluded as a matter of law from being able to adopt because you, you can't, your code has been changed, and therefore an applicant can't request what is not in your code. Uh, however, as you heard the city manager say, you have left open the apartment accommodation as a special use permit, so in other words, and I agree with the speaker that that is in the form of a zoning action, and so you have every right to exercise your discretion and grant apartments. You know, with respect to the defensibility, I'm comfortable with the defensibility of this as it is drafted. I will tell you that with respect to the, the comments Ms. Field just made, I, I do agree, however, that if you took residential off the table altogether, that you may in fact, um, take away the opportunity for what might be a highest and best-use commercial product, that is in nature of a mixed use, that, that requires some component of residential, and you won't be even able to consider that because you took away the ability to even have a modest amount of apartment, um, by way of a cup. You do retain your legislative discretion with respect to that special use permit apartment product, and so I'm, I'm comfortable with it as presented to you from a defensibility standpoint.
Thank you.
Bert? Is the fifty percent number, is that a set in stone, or is that-
Yes, it is, it's, it's part of the use, um, permit criteria for apartments.
So we could-
I mean, you could, you could always change it for, with a text amendment, certainly, but right now it is in there as fifty percent.
So, so if we were to approve this this evening, it would be fifty percent, and then we would have to go in and, and do another text amendment to, to reduce that if we so chose?
That is correct, yeah. Now, don't forget, it's fifty percent, or the, the first floor of the buildings can be, have to be non-residential. There is a choice, one or the other.
So clarify the, the first floor, or so, you know, if, if you had, I'm just making up, ten stories, and, you know, each was ten percent, so are you saying if, if the first floor, uh, was commercial, that then ninety percent of the building could be?
Yeah, that's the way it's written right now, that it had, non-residential use on the first floor, or fifty percent, um, or, or less for the apartment.
Separate buildings, then? It would be separate buildings for the fifty percent?
Yes, it could be, it depends how it's built. So some buildings, there's a mixed use vertically, as you know, um, but it would have to total fifty percent, the commercial and office would have to be at least fifty percent of the total square footage of the development.
So that's, that's a question, so, there may be a building that you, first floor, you do commercial, and the other floors are residential, but overall, it's still a fifty percent?
No, it's not, it's one or the other.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, but again, though, that would be under this modification with a use permit.
That's right.
Which means, of course, that that's up to you to, to make that determination, so I mean, that's, that can't, that would not be as of right.
So this just gives people the right to apply for a special use permit?
That's correct.
That's right.
Rick?
So, I, just so I understand, because the, the fifty percent is a little bit confusing, we could in fact, that's, that's in the, the text today if we approve this, but when we look at the use permit, we could make different stipulations, or are we locked into what it is that's written? Could I say, let's say we, we don't want it to be just the first floor, and the next ten floors are going to be residential, can we change that component?
Right, so you're going to have a lot of flexibility, because think of a use permit just as a zoning, if I can, just to think, your, your way of thinking, but what you're not going to be able to do is you're not going to be able to, to basically do ad hoc text amendments by way of your decision-making, so you're going to have to make decisions within the confines of the performance tables of your code, but within the performance standards of your code, you're going to be able to make and have a lot of flexibility. Um, I don't think you're going to be able, I mean, in other words, if someone comes in and makes an application requesting a product that is consistent with the code as drafted, then you need to consider it consistent with the code as drafted. You could deny it, obviously, if, under a use permit, or you could modify that request in some degree, but again, you can't do text amendments by way of your zoning process.
So, so we could still deny, if someone came in and it, it met the exact terms of what's in the text, if we pass this, we could still say when we consider that property, that location, we don't have to grant that as a use permit, even if they meet the requirements of that use permit?
No, in fact, I mean, that's exactly the criteria, though. A special use permit by its legal definition are uses that may not be appropriate in the area where they are applied for, so they may be appropriate in some areas, but not all, and that's why the council gets to exercise its discretion and make that determination, so yes.
Anybody else? Any questions?
No, I mean, I sat on the planning commission, it was originally presented, and I'm going to, I mean, I support the original plan, and I'd be open to use permits on other residential besides apartments.
And, you know, option here is, is, uh, you know, approve or deny, or defer if there's, you know, more tweaking that somebody might have some interest, but, uh-
Mr. Mayor, can I go back to Councilmember Morik's question? I want to make sure I'm not adding more confusion. Always, the council, if they get a request for perhaps a certain density on an area, you would have the ability to perhaps lower that density. In other words, if you, if the council decides, and it's in light determination, that there may be an opportunity for residential that makes sense, consistent with what Ms. Field says, but you would have the ability to lower that. What you couldn't do is expand it beyond the density that the code otherwise allows, so you can't do text amendments, which is what I'm trying to get at, and I, I don't want to confuse you. You're going to have a great deal of, of flexibility to act within the confines of the code, but you're not going to be able to do what the code specifically prohibits.
Okay, so a standard T six, if it, if it's commercial-
Yes.
-no issue. If they want to do residential component, we still have flexibility to deny if someone comes forward and they say, I want to do a two, a three-story, and I want first story to be commercial, and I want the other two stories to be residential or apartments, something that's rentable.
So they would come in for a use permit under this variation of the code, and then you could look at it, and of course, as in most zoning decisions, there's a lot of maybe some give and take, or some negotiation with the various council members who want to make the product fit if you think it can fit, and that might in fact mean lessening the amount of density, the amount of residential that's appropriate there. My only point is, is you couldn't, for instance, turn the, the code on its head and say, you can put all your, uh, residential on the first floor, because that's specifically not allowed by your ordinance. That's the, the point I was trying to make.
Could you go the other direction? It, let's say you think that you want to have more commercial component than just the first floor, is that within our rights to do that?
Absolutely.
To change the mix?
Absolutely.
I guess my, because my concern is I don't want to get locked into where it looks like we're going to have a legal challenge if someone comes in and they meet the letter of what is in the use permit, and we say, no, we don't think it's a good fit. I want to make sure we've got flexibility if we approve this to actually deny it or negotiate to actually get more commercial on that space.
You're going to have that flexibility.
Okay.
Bert? I'm still a little confused on the fifty percent and/or the first floor. So, so you're saying we'll go back again to the ten-story building, if they do, the entire first floor is commercial, then the other nine floors could be all apartments?
They, they could come in with their application reflecting that, yes, and that would meet the criteria for the special permit. However, as our city attorney is saying, you, you can say that's not enough, you don't have to accept that, um, and so you could ask for, for more, or you could deny the petition. That's the, your purview that you would have under the use permit.
Or if it is a mix use, mix of uses on the first floor, then the ten-story building can only be five stories for, for easy simple math, apartments?
Right.
Uh, yeah.
That's at fifty percent.
Right, fifty percent.
But we could change it any, anywhere between there if we thought it was not appropriate?
That's right, because the, because the residential mix is in there, so you have the purview of, of-
Can we just-
Looking at it on a case-by-case.
Can we just deny it because we don't like it? If it come, I mean, I mean, let's just get, let's just cut to the chase, a special, a special use permit. That's-
There are a variety of factors that governments can legitimately employ to deny. One of them is aesthetics. You can, you can legitimately deny something for aesthetics, you could legitimately deny something for infrastructure concerns. Those are the sorts of case-by-case, specific evaluations on property that we would work together with you on and make a determination if it makes sense for the city of Milton, so I'm not being glib at all, but just, we don't like it. There would probably be a reason that you didn't like it, I'd want to work through with the council on what specifically is, is it too dense? Is it too intense? Uh, is the residential too much? You know, the nine stories, someone came up with, with the one floor of commercial and nine stories of residential, I could very easily see that not making it past the council, because the reality is, it wasn't a variation too far different than that, which is what got Crescent denied the first time.
Right.
Is what I seem to-
On vote.
That's right. So, the answer is, is you're going to have the legislative discretion to deny it, and with respect to why we're going to enter into that denial, if we ever get there, I'll work with the council on that, but you're going to have a lot of flexibility.
And Kathy, why apartments versus condo-type, you know, ownership? Because it's easier to-
Because, uh, we don't distinguish between apartment rentals or condominium ownership. We just talk about the, the, the unit, and we call that unit an apartment, but the ownership can be either.
Which-
Yeah.
Which I, I endorse, that, that way of thinking about it.
And I understand that the, um, the economic development component of it, but I also understand in a far-fetched nine stories of apartments, that kind of gives me a little heartburn over it.
And I guess that's, that's where my question was, do we have the flexibility, if we say we don't think that this is the right mix, we can still in fact deny that. That, I guess that's, I think the concern I'm hearing is, do we, I know we can't just say, no, we don't like it, there, we'd have to consider it, hear it, and then go through-
In good faith, that's right.
But as long as we've got a, in our minds, a legitimate reason to say, no, we don't think for this location, that's the right mix.
Yeah, the best answer I can give you is, so long as you're working within the four corners of the ordinance, you have the right to deny it, and you have the right to lessen it to a product that is still consistent with your ordinance, so yes, that's right. My only point that I made probably ham-fistedly was saying, I, I don't want to confuse you, you don't have the right to give them something that is outside the contours of what your code allows, but within the contours, absolutely. Uh, if it's too intense, it's too intense. Many governments deal every day with developments that meet the performance standards of the code but are still too intense for that area. That happens every day.
And somebody made the comment about the ten-story or the nine-stories, and that's why I, I brought up that example, because that goes from, we're talking fifty percent versus all of a sudden you're ninety percent-
Ninety percent.
Residential with just a small chain, so that's, you know, ninety percent's pretty close to a hundred percent, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question, if I may.
Okay.
Kathy, is, is it your understanding, and I forgive me for not knowing this off the top of my head, but is it your understanding if the council approves this this evening, the moratorium expires? if the council approves this this evening, the moratorium expires as a matter of law?
Yes.
That's my, that was my understanding as well, and I thought that was the case. I just wanted to bring that to you as well.
Was there anything else, Matt?
I'm trying to think of the place in Alpharetta. Gosh, I can't think. On North Point Parkway, they've got a place that kind of has a first floor commercial with some apartments in there as well. And I, I just looked at that. I don't remember the name of it, what it was, but it has some qualities to it that had the mixed use, and it was pretty vibrant, from what I remember seeing, just the way it was. The apartments themselves were not, you know, dilapidated in any way. They were actually pretty upscale. Some really fancy restaurants down below, people walking, things like that. I'm not for a lot of apartments, but I like the flexibility of having those options. And that's really my only thinking. And there are examples of them that are around here. Maybe you can pick out an example that might have something like this nearby. But we've seen them before. We've seen, you know, these, these designs or GMA courses that we've taken, and they're really becoming more popular in Savannah, for example, as well. So those are the, the questions. There's, you know, with the flexibility, I think with form-based code, I think it's a, it's something to consider, but I just like having that flexibility. We can always say no, and I'm glad to say no. And Crescent, I said no to, and so that was, there's a reason for that. But I think, I don't want to limit us as a council either for, if a good idea ever comes around.
Rick?
I think as an example, Matt, what I've seen is, in Avalon, you've got first floor-
Right.
And then you've got two additional stories of high-end condos or whatever, and I know downtown Alpharetta is doing the same thing. But again, back to the question that Ken, we still have the flexibility to say, yeah, it meets the guidelines of potential use permit, but if we think it's not the right, it's not the right location, or the right use, or the right mix, we still can deny that component.
Yeah, that, that's a very articulate way of saying it. Let me just offer up one more thing to the council, and again, we may have some retreats on this or otherwise, and some of you are very adept at zoning law, but, you know, the state of zoning law is in flux right now, and I don't, I guess I have to tell all of you that, but the Supreme Court's issued a series of rulings that have certainly made zoning challenges right now very interesting. But I will say, in the common vernacular, what I used to call a garden variety zoning lawsuit, remember, the issue in a garden variety zoning issue is not the zoning that was requested that was denied, it's the zoning they have. That's what's at issue in a zoning lawsuit. So to your question, let's say that an applicant comes in for a special use permit and proposes something that is generally consistent with the cup, or a special use permit, and you like the product generally, but there's too much of it. Well, you may decide that you're not going to grant what was requested, but you may grant a variation on that that is in fact consistent with what you believe is appropriate for the area, that's consistent with your special use permit. And that may not be what the applicant wanted, but it's what you like. That would be fine, too. And then my job, or whoever is representing you in the defense, if we get sued, will be to assert and hopefully defend the council by saying that it's constitutional.
So with Joe and Bert's example of the 10-story, if they came in with the first floor and then nine, and we said, you know what, for that location, we really think it should be more 50% commercial, 50%, we have flexibility to-
As long as we're acting within the contours of what our code authorizes us, then yes, we might limit the extent of the residential. Go ahead and grant that, approve it. They would ensue us, claiming that that's unconstitutional, the zoning's unconstitutional, and we'll argue that it, that it's lawful, that it does in fact return an economically viable return on their property investment, and they will say it won't. That's the way most of these zoning lawsuits work.
Okay. Somebody else have anything?
I just, go ahead. One more comment. I still am going back to, we have T2 through T5 reserve, that has residential included in it, and we set aside T6. I just want to make sure I understand this for these, this more, you know, this use. I understand that we want to have flexibility, but if we set aside this potential for future commercial development, that's, we don't have much fully commercial land in Milton, correct?
Well, the, the form-based code allows, it allows, the height up to 16, allows a significant amount of density, but in terms of allowed uses currently, it allows right down to single-family homes, it allows in the T6. And as, the more we looked at it, we realized that it's probably not the type of density that we want to see in these very valuable T6-zoned areas, that we really, from our comp plan and our zoning code, we really had looked at these as really being much more intensively developed, and by allowing those type of residential low-intensity uses, whether they be townhomes, or quads, or triplexes, or single-family, that that really was never going to develop this area of the intensity that we had envisioned. So that's why our proposal is to take out all those residential uses, but at the same time, leave in apartments, because apartments can be developed at a high density. And so, but with a use permit, so it gives you the opportunity, and a case-by-case, to review those applications. So that was the thinking behind that.
And I'd just like to make a statement, too. You know, number one, as I asked earlier, this is T6, and it's very limited. You know, if this were coming forward to us, and even considered to be allowed in all of our commercial areas, I'd be 100% against it. Sometimes, since it is a small, limited area, I would certainly consider it because to have the flexibility. Again, so we're not locked in, but have the flexibility, because, you know, what you see in a changing market, we all hear that people that live in Milton, they may want different options and have to move out of Milton because of it. There may be people who want to downsize, or whatever. There may be condos, or whatever. And again, you see, I won't name names, but there are cities between us and Sandy Springs that are really having a hard time now, because they haven't adapted to some of the newer things that people want, and they're citizens and all that, and people are moving out of there too. So, you know, again, I like the ability to have a little bit of flexibility, but would want to make sure that it's very limited, so that, you know, it's just a small, a small percentage of our area, so it doesn't, doesn't sprawl. But anyways, so, Matt?
You're a dividend investor, right?
Sure.
Yeah, so it's kind of like a, a form-based code is kind of like a, you know, dividend stock. You make money with the payments of the dividend, as well as maybe appreciation, depending on what happens. And so that's the way it is as the markets change. It allows for that flexibility, and that's, I think, was the reason why we were looking at it. So, anyway, just my thought.
So, again, we can, you know, I'll open up for a motion. It could certainly be approved, not approved, or deferred, so I'll, I'll open up the floor.
I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 17-323, as is.
Second?
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Kootz, a second from Councilmember Morik. Any discussion?
I've got another question for Kathy. So what would it take if we agreed up here as a council that we wanted to have that flexibility, however, we wanted to then maybe change that number lower than 50%? Could, would we just have to direct you to do another-
Sure, it's, it's a, it's a text amendment.
And then how could we procedurally, other than us, if we, if we agreed that we, we wanted to do that and look at a different number, obviously, we couldn't tie a condition to this, but how could, how could we make sure that that followed up if we were in agreement to do that?
Well, make sure I'm hearing the right question. If you're simply asking that, that you want to make sure that text amendment gets done, my experience with Milton has been that if the council generally shows a consensus, even without a formal vote, that staff put it in, in, in action. So I'm not the least bit worried about that.
With, with, with my colleagues up here, in, in, in the spirit of supporting this for the economic and the, and trying to get something from Woods turned into something that's, that's doing something, would, would we be willing to direct staff to look at another text amendment and change the percentage of apartments down from 50%?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, procedurally, we have a, a motion that is pending, and all I'm asking, Councilmember Hugh, perfectly appropriate what you're saying, I'm just asking, please, no votes on this, because we've got a main motion on the table.
You know, I just, I'm just going to affect the way I vote on it, so.
The answer is yes. Okay, so explain to me that process, then.
No, I, I think what Councilmember Hugh was looking for is just an informal head nod, and I'm perfectly fine with that. I just wasn't sure if that was the take.
No, no, I get that, but to, to what, if this, this passes as written now, that we go back and do another text amendment, or change this text amendment?
I don't think we can change this to 50%, less than 50%.
That's another section of the code, is my understanding, so it's just going to have to start another process to change that, that section of the code.
Okay, so if this were to pass, then the, the other process could, okay.
So, and what happens in between the time that this passes and we're working on the other? Applications can come in?
That's correct.
Or we could do a moratorium.
Or we could do a moratorium.
And, and I'm okay with flexibility, but my, my level of flexibility is not nine stories of apartments. So, that's just my opinion, and so that's why I won't support the motion, and I'm okay with townhomes and other type of mixed uses, but not. And I was on the planning commission, and it was presented to us differently, and we all supported it as well.
Going back to the nine-story, and that's why I brought up that, because it grossly, you know, it's an example that shows you what could happen. Is that something that we could deny within reason? I know you've said that, you know, we've talked about it, but for some comfort here till the text-
Right, I mean, so a couple of things would have to happen. Number one is it had to be an applicant come forth and spend the money to, to, to present an application to, for a use permit consistent with the action you all take this evening. I think anybody that knows the council knows that any, a nine-story residential apartment complex over one story of commercial is not going to be well-received by the city council, but if they are, I think, foolish enough to make that application, then the council will have its full legislative discretion on whether that makes sense. That could be either to deny it outright, that could be to work with the developer, to come up with a product that makes sense, or to approve what they ask for. So you'd have all of those options.
But, I mean, we're all not going to be sitting here 20 years from now, also, and so I kind of want to protect the future council, too.
But I think, too, we're talking possibly immediately moving into the next phase of that to tweak that.
To tweak it and take away even the, right, I understand.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I, okay, all right, so was Rick, Bert? Okay, so that passes four to two, Sudi.
And then just, if, if I may, Mayor, you know, what we need to put on the next, we need to work on a text amendment for the 50%. Do you have a number? A lot less than 50%?
Voted zero. Somewhere in between zero and 50, I guess.
At least. Is this okay to talk?
So, obviously, you're, you're looking for a number somewhere between zero and 50. Ultimately, you're, you're looking to constrain the flexibility for, for potential future councils, but you're going to have to give us a number to, to work with.
Well, we, I think we're also open to townhomes. I mean, I mean, there could be a, it doesn't have to be 50% apartment, it could be 10% townhomes. You know, I, I don't, I don't know what that number is, but I think we're open to-
Maybe we could discuss it at the work session.
Yeah, maybe we have a work session, and maybe we could ask staff to give us some ideas of, you know, options and things that may work.
And, and, yeah, and I guess a question back to you, Kathy. Did I hear you right when you said we're using the term apartment, but apartment really could be-
Living unit.
A, it could be a condo, it could be, I guess I'm not thinking about town, townhome, whatever you want to call it. It could be living space that somebody owns.
What can it not be?
From a residential standpoint, what is, what can an apartment not be? A single-family home is not an apartment.
That's detached.
So anything that's detached, detached is not an apartment?
Right.
Town, is townhome?
Townhomes are multifamily, they're attached.
And complexes are attached, that, you know, but, so, basically, what we're usually talking about is a stacked unit. I think that's, you know, a flat. I would call it a flat myself, but that it's stacked up. That, that's what we're, we're talking about.
Do you, would, if I may, would you consider a townhome and an apartment to be interchangeable from a permitting perspective?
Um, no, we have a separate designation for row houses.
Thank you.
So I'd like to, if, if the council's okay with this, direct staff to bring back to a work session, and with some options, knowing that the council's interested in lowering the percentage of residential on that. So I don't know that we have an exact number, but just with some options. Everybody good with that?
Sounds good.
All right, we'll move on down to finished business. Sudi, will you please sound the item?
This item is consideration of amendments to Chapter 20, Soil Erosion, Sedimentation and Pollution Control, Article 6, Soil Erosion Within the City of Milton Code of Ordinances, Agenda Item Number 17321. First presentation was heard at the city council meeting on December 18th, 2017. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Periodically, we're notified by the state of changes that need to be made to our base E and S ordinance, erosion and sediment control ordinance, to remain in compliance with the minimum state standards established by the model ordinance. In this case, we were notified that there was some language regarding the definition of the final stabilization of a site that needed to be modified, and that's what this change does. So the only change to the ordinance tonight is the mandatory change to the definition of final stabilization. That's it.
Okay, any questions? We're cut and dry, Nick Carter. I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number 17-3211.
Okay, a motion and a second. For approval, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
All right, I will conclude this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Which unanimous. Thank you, folks, for being here tonight.